Good evening, I'll call our meeting into order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'll have the clerk please call the roll. Supervisor Fountain, here. Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Clerk Shofu, here. Trustee Colaini?
Here.
Trustee Jermaine?
Absinthe.
Trustee Harper?
Present.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yeah.
Here. Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by trustee Colaini, second by clerk Shofu. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number four is approval of our meeting, uh, I'm sorry. Number five is call of the public, anybody call the public this evening? Being nobody, a call of the public, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Support. Motion by treasurer Horning, second by trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is applicant. Site plan number 528, Woods Edge. It's a preliminary site plan, condominium plan. Good evening. If you would like to come forward and, um, James will put that, um... Hey Bob, could you help me to get their plan set up so we can put it up above on the TV?
Well, I have one, a PDF, is it the same that was submitted?
Is that the same one? Yeah, okay. Very well. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a series of different meetings that go back from the Planning Commission to the Board, um, and I'm going to turn this over to trustee Colaini, who's our liaison to the Planning Commission, and Joe, if you could give us a update as to where is in the Planning Commission and we can open it up for discussion.
Um, this is a preliminary plat, condominium, um, approval of a condominium plat. Um, the subject property is about 20.8 acres. The applicant is proposing to, uh, construct 21, uh, units on this parcel. Uh, it backs up to Lone Tree, which is, it doesn't access on to Lone Tree, but it backs up to Lone Tree, which is a, um, non-certified, uh, county line, um, area. Um, there's some dispute as to what that really means, but according to the planning department, that's not a, that's not a public access for, um, maintained by the Livingston County Road Commission, which is true. Uh, but it, I believe it's still a public driveway, but in any case, this will, this will have access off Maxville Lake Road. Originally, this parcel, um, previously had, uh, preliminary plat approval for, I for, I believe, 22, um, lots. Uh, this is, this proposal will have 21. Um, it is SR suburban, so basically the minimum, uh, lot size, um, will, has to be minimum 20,000 square feet, and it will have, uh, it has 20 REUs currently assigned, I believe, within what actually have to be purchased, so, um, this will have, uh, be, uh, this will be, this development will, um, be connected to the sewer system. The, the, much of the discussion at the Planning Commission had to do the requirements relative to, um, landscaping, for lack of a better word. Um, part of that is because this is a wooded area, much of the wooded area is going to be preserved in the construction of this, it didn't make sense to have them cut trees down and then turn around and replace them with, you know, smaller, young trees. So, much of the development's going to be centered on preserving, uh, I believe the applicant had did some survey of what trees would be preserved, and I think there's also a conservation area being proposed, uh, to protect, um, the wooded, um, aspects of this development. On the net, the applicant's here, maybe he would like to, uh, they would like to discuss anything further.
Sure. Good evening.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, or any comments? I actually have a couple of questions.
Okay, no, I think that Joe covered everything quite well. Um, yes, he did mention there is a 25-foot preservation easement around three sides of the property. We picked up about 770 trees in that, four inches and above, um, so it is a well-wooded lot, uh, we're going to be protecting the majority of those. Um, the project's got about 26% open space, a nice woodlot, if you've not been out there, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of this on the 12th of March, pretty much as is, um, and that's what we had before you this evening, and would be happy to answer any questions.
I've got, I've got a few questions. The main access point is on the asphalt portion of Maxville Road, correct?
That's correct, yes, yeah.
And can you explain the, it looks like there's a second access point off the cul-de-sac that's not shaded, um, is, what's the anticipation for that?
Uh, that is the emergency access. Uh, the fire chief asks for a secondary emergency access in the event they needed to get in there, uh, to fight a fire, um, so that's what that is. It's actually going to be a gated gravel access, there will be a gate out at Maxville Road with a Knox box on it, um, just in the event that they need to get in there for some reason they can't access through the main entrance.
Because the private road is longer than 600 foot, there's a requirement for secondary access, this would...
Okay, then can you explain, it looks like it might be an asphalt, um, arm that comes off the cul-de-sac in the other direction, what the purpose of that is?
Yep, that is a shared driveway, yep, and that services, uh, lots, 20.
Oh, I see what you're, okay.
Right.
And because there's only two homes on that, it doesn't need a cul-de-sac? Is it, would that be the reason why?
Yeah, I believe it's also, it, there's enough space back on the, on the left, correct?
Yeah, there is a T-turnaround in the back.
T-turnaround.
Okay.
Yeah, but it does not require a cul-de-sac, that's right.
Other questions from the Board?
I'll move to approve the preliminary site condominium plan for Woods Edge, site plan number 528, conditional upon the applicant submitting a final site condominium, condominium plan and condominium documents that address the outstanding issues noted by all the reviewing agencies, the Planning Commission, and the Township Board.
Support. Motion by trustee Colaini, second by trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in the, next time around.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 88 is pending business, used vehicle purchase, manager Whitman?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, uh, this is just to carry through on what we previously discussed, uh, we have, uh, old, uh, police cruiser, it's, we beat up pretty well, it's ready to retire, and, uh, we budgeted for replacement of that this year, uh, we're ready to go out and get the best value, uh, just, the issue is, we have to be able to move quickly, so we're asking for, uh, approval to move forward with that, um, once we find a proper value for the money, just upon my approval. Happy to answer any questions the Board may have, I think we've talked about this already.
I'm just trying to get my screen to the same page. Is there any discussion by the Board? You're looking for it not to exceed 13,000?
Yes, which, uh, also includes the trade-in value of the vehicle.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a used vehicle not to exceed $13,000, including the traded value of the current vehicle, uh, at the discretion of the Township Manager. Do you want that?
Uh, yes, I'm just, uh, also asking for permission to sign the necessary documents as well as issue payment, once we find it.
Second. Motion by trustee Harper, second by treasurer Horning. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just want to tell you, I, I, I saw the amount, and...
Wonder what can you get for that?
Yeah, what can you get that's going to last, that we, for $13,000? I mean, most of the, the later model vehicles, oh, Bill, maybe you know, because I know you...
Well, I'm actually looking for one right now.
Have you seen any out there?
The good news, we don't put a lot of miles on it necessarily, I mean, we, the, the Trailblazers back there, we bought used in this price range and...
Okay, well, I mean, I, I'm just wondering, is that enough? And I, I, I'm not necessarily into spending a lot of money, I just don't want you to have to come back and say, you know, look, we've looked, and, and, and the reality is, is we need to go up a little bit more in order to find the right, a vehicle that's going to last and, and do the things that you need to do.
If I could, um, thank you for allowing me to speak, the, we've located a 2009 Chevrolet Silverado, it's two-wheel drive work truck, um, has 50,000 miles on it, and it's at a local dealer, and, um, we located one prior, which was not nearly as nice as this one, and because I couldn't sign anything, it was sold prior to us getting it to the Board, so that's why this request has come in this way. Um, I'm planning on going down there tomorrow morning pending this approval, and we'll be able to secure it with the trade-in, we're looking at $12,000 for this vehicle.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Any other discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. New business, we have no new business this evening, we'll move on to board reports. We are in our first meeting in April, and we'll start with clerk Shofu.
Uh, nothing new to report.
Is it too late to get my, um, to be a voter, if I'm not registered? What's, what's the deadline for that?
For absentee ballots, you can get them right up to Saturday before the election.
Okay, and where would I go to get one of those if I want?
Stop to the clerk's office.
Okay.
Get you an application.
All right, thank you. Treasurer Horning?
Nothing this evening.
Trustee Colaini?
I have nothing this evening.
Trustee Harper?
Buffy.
Trustee Petrucci?
I have nothing.
Boy, that was a, that was a... I have nothing this evening as well. Manager Whitman, your report?
Feel like I should.
You shouldn't have anything. You should add something.
Yeah, I do. Well, I have just a, a couple highlights from the operation reports, uh, one, as a follow-up to, uh, the discussion you had when, uh, drain commissioner Jean-Curie was here, uh, we did sit down with them regarding the, the O&M and the taking on the assets of the Lake Tyrone system, uh, we crunched some numbers and took a look at some things. At the end of the day, I, I think we're, uh, I think the concerns and the questions that have been raised will be addressed. That system, it, you know, that district, uh, once it, it's connected to the system, there will be a fund balance there in that system, that fund balance will get turned over to the Livingston Regional Sewer System, so that, you sort of call that the sinking fund, if you will, that, that we've looked at in years past, I'm waiting for confirmation on a projection for what that number will be, um, and, uh, that, and then going forward, uh, as near as we can calculate, the grinder pump surcharge that, uh, they, that would also play to them ought to cover or be in the same range of the type of expenses we'd expect to see for their step pump setups there. Uh, we did agree that, um, they need to collect some better data, uh, going forward, and once we get a few years' worth of data, we could reevaluate whether that rate is appropriate. Um, I think, uh, we're fairly comfortable that those concerns that had been raised would be addressed, uh, we'll have, ask them to be prepared to have that information, uh, when, as it gets closer to action. Uh, the, the other thing, just wanted to highlight briefly, was, uh, regarding the water operations, we, we have a, um, a meeting we're trying to get scheduled, United Waters asked to meet with, uh, supervisor Fountain and I, uh, next week, I think we've got confirmation on that, uh, meeting time. Uh, it's come to our attention that there are times when they know that a community is going to transition from them, that they may choose to terminate the contract early, and, uh, if you had a chance to read that in the operation report or not, but I wanted to make sure that was at your attention. That is not a concern to us, they are required to give a, you know, a healthy notice, and, um, and we're fully confident that should that, they choose to do that, that we're prepared, uh, to make that transition, just wanted to make you aware that we may be, we may have to accelerate our plans, um, so you're not caught off guard by that. Um, and then, just maybe a couple of items that sort of transition into our information discussion, um, I did get confirmation today from Mayberry that, you know, their first deadline has passed, we gave them a one-month extension, that has passed, uh, so their first deposit is now a hard, hard deposit, and now they're putting another $100,000 into escrow as the purchase agreement, um, uh, anticipated, so, uh, that is moving forward. And then, a couple of handouts you have in front of you tonight, um, uh, one is, uh, just a, a good document, I think, that sort of highlights or summarizes the 2015 projects. Uh, on the left side, you, you sort of see it broken into categories of all the projects we got going on this year, and the right side adds them all together, uh, for you, just to get, give you a perspective of, of, uh, the work that we'll be doing this year, capital project-wise. And, uh, part of that is still to be determined regarding, uh, the part, the parking lot of Heritage Park, as well as the benches, and there'll be more to come, uh, on that, coming back to you, I just wanted to give you, to you, you that as a resource. As part of that, I also did want to acknowledge, uh, administrative committee, we talked a little bit about that Dunham Road sidewalk project, and just confirming that for now, the project is just from the Settlers Park path to the high school, that's what was in the CIP, we're not taking that all the way to Heartland Road, that is something we may, you know, want to consider for the future, I know there were some inquiries about it, but for this year, it was, uh, to look just to the, to the high school driveway. That would be coming to the Board for approval before we move forward with it, uh, that's the, that's the piece that was in the CIP that you approved last year. Uh, and the last thing is, uh, the, in preparation for the CIP update, uh, you have this, uh, quasi-survey here, uh, there are two columns there that we're looking for feedback from you on, please, over the next, uh, two weeks, uh, these will be due on, uh, the 21st, two weeks from tonight, and, um, you can certainly drop them off or scan them in before then. Uh, we're asking for your feedback on these projects, how you would rank them, and we'll aggregate those together for you, uh, as we have in the past. And then, uh, a similar exercise that we did with the Parks Task Force, uh, is about a kind of a budget number, uh, you might have in mind for those, I know that, that, you know, it lacks some detail, uh, but for the, as a preliminary exercise, it was quite useful to the task force to do this, we've provided to you what kind of a low and a high end of that kind of project might be, and if, if you talk in dollars first, that can kind of give us a sense of where you're at, and then we can get into the details later about what, what kind of scope and, uh, uh, that looks like. Um, so if you can give us some feedback on those, uh, individual, we'll pull them together, uh, once we collect them on the 21st, and, and that'll kick off our CIP update discussions. So this is a similar, uh, exercise that we did last year, um, I trust that you'll find. You do by the 21st, we'll also send a follow-up email if, uh, and, um, and in case you don't have them, we'll have copies here on the 21st to fill out that night if you need.
So we're going to have further discussion on the Heritage Park parking lot and sidewalk before that actually is approved?
The, uh, so the, the Heritage Park, yes, yes, on both. Uh, the Heritage Park parking lot, uh, the Parks Advisory Committee, uh, didn't have a chance to talk about that yet, they would be meaning to talk about the scope of that, that's where we left it at this board table, was to ask the committee to chew on that and provide a recommendation, um, so they'll look at that first and, and their recommendation will come to the Board on what to consider. The Dunham Road sidewalk, uh, has not been approved yet or contracted or anything, we are working on that, um, uh, to bring that so that we can get going this construction season on it, um, so.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, well, it's not approved yet.
When is, uh, when is that meeting expected for the capital improvement? In May?
For the CIP? Um, I don't know that we've targeted a meeting quite yet.
These in by the 21st.
Yeah, we do want it by the 21st, and, and I guess we didn't go through the step of identifying which meeting we'd go from there, because there's some work we got to do to pull that together after we get these, um, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
But the expectation would be that the park meeting meet before the Board? Okay, we haven't set a date for that, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for manager Whitman? Being none, we'll move on to number 12A, which is compensation commission determination, and manager Whitman, you were at that meeting, correct?
Uh, just at the beginning, uh, we had a meeting here that night.
Okay.
Just to answer any questions, I'm out of there.
Uh, perhaps you could just give, um, those here in the audience and those that may be at home, what the compensation commission is, and why we'd made a decision as a Board to go in that direction?
Yeah, the compensation commission is provided for by Michigan statute as a way for a, uh, a board of, uh, commission of residents, of five residents of the township, uh, serving five-year, uh, staggered terms, uh, every two years to evaluate the compensation of our, uh, elected officials, as well as our appointed boards and commissions. Uh, they use a methodology that they choose to evaluate, uh, the, the stipends or perdiems or, or salaries that those positions receive, and then they issue a determination, uh, for what the, uh, pay should be for the next two years, and then that pay becomes policy in effect, uh, with no action by the Board or anybody else. Uh, the Board does have the option by statute to reject the determination, um, in whole, not in part, by two-thirds majority, um, veto, if you will, of that determination, and if that's done, then the existing, uh, pay structure stays in effect for the next two years, so they meet every odd numbered year.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the Board for that?
So that would, does that take place now or next year?
Uh, so it will go, they did reach a determination before the beginning of the fiscal year, so will go into effect this fiscal year after the 30 days has, from their determination has passed, so somewhere around April 24th or something, I can't remember what exactly the day, is when it would take effect.
Okay.
So do we know how they determine this?
Their minutes are there that, where they talk about how they did it, and, and historically, you could go back and look at their minutes, they, they put a lot of the work, maybe more of the work, two years ago when they met, in sort of establishing the baseline, I guess you could consider.
But I, I still don't know, I, I read the minutes, and I still don't know how they did it, it looks to me like they just took a percentage out of the air and said, this looks like a cost of living type thing, and said, that's what it's going to be.
Yeah, I don't know if the minute...
I'm just kind of wondering how they determined that, because it seems to me that everything we do in this township, we do in comparisons, we just did a study on, 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 for now.
Sure.
So why would there not be comparisons for our clerk and our treasurer with other surrounding townships? I mean, I, I read that, and I didn't, uh, in fact, some of it was actually wrong, because they had in the minutes where the, the trustees received an increase in 2013, and I have been on this Board for 10 years, and there has been no increase for the trustees.
Right.
Uh, there has been for the clerk and the treasurer, but what my concern is more with clerk and treasurer, not the trustee part, my concern is that they are underpaid compared to clerks and trustees in other surrounding communities, and I don't see where I, where that has been taken in consideration. I don't know, how, how do you feel about that? Do you have any feelings at all about that?
I, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with you, I mean, I, I think that, um, I, I think you're making a very good, valid point about comparing our township as it relates to other townships.
Absolutely.
Um, I mean, it, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, um, you have to look at what is in your, what's going on in your vicinity, I'm not talking, you know, what's going on in, in Oakland Township or, or Rochester Hills or something like that, I'm talking about what is in Livingston County for similar size and, um, so I, I don't disagree with you there, I mean, that, you know, I, I think, you know, we, we, I, I think I speak for some of the, I would, I think we, I speak for most of the trustees or all the trustees, we don't really do this for the money, I mean, it's, it's pretty...
Well, I, I, I'm not talking about the trustees, though, I, I mean...
Right.
I mean, I, I just...
I'm a daily...
I've said for years that I think that our clerk and our treasurer are underpaid compared to other communities, and I don't, and I, and I think that that should be looked at, and I don't see where it was, that's, that's my question, so.
Do we know, like, what the discrepancy is, do we have, like, a rough idea?
Yeah, we have, Larry and I have a lot of statistics, if you'd like them, from other towns, from the MTA.
So what are our, again, what are our options? We can reject, we can vote two-thirds to reject it and set our own, correct?
No.
We can't do that.
No, I mean, there, there could potentially be a process, I suppose, to repeal the ordinance for this commission, um, but it's, you set that up as an independent body and they make their decision, and, and for all intents and purposes, using whatever methodology they'd like. I, I wasn't there for all the deliberations this time or last time, I do know last time and this time, they were provided with data from the Michigan Township Association survey, so they had data, I know, for all the, all the townships in Livingston County, as well as neighboring townships in Oakland, uh, nearby Oakland County, um, they had those numbers, they had them last time as well, they looked at them, I recall some conversation, and there were some, they had them met multiple times last time, and they asked for additional information about some of those places, and, um, I can't quite remember exactly how, uh, but they, they act independently, they can choose to use whatever methodology they like. There are a couple things that can happen, I mean, this Board or any individual can certainly go to that commission and, and present information or ask for consideration for something, you can commission a, a study of some sort, if you'd like, or to compile a study along those lines for them to consider, uh, if you'd like, for the next time that they convene, um, so.
So there's nothing to be done, that we can't pass, like, a separate resolution if we did a study and came up with things, or?
I'd have to look, I would be surprised if that's the case, I, um, the copy of the ordinance, um, is in your agenda packet.
Do they have access to the MTA compensation survey online system?
They do not. They have access in as much as if they ask, if they want anything, and it's made very clear multiple times through Sharon and I, if they want any additional information, we're there to help them find it, to get access to it, and we, because they've gotten it last time, we gave it to them again this time of what, um, all that data, because we had given them last time all the surrounding townships that I talked about, as well as comparable-sized townships throughout the state, and last time, they focused on the surrounding townships, in Livingston County and, and a couple townships into Oakland County. We provided them that same for each of those communities of the data from MTA.
Well, I did ask Sharon for the data, and it was sorely lacking townships that are surrounding us, it didn't have Osceola, I believe maybe Brighton Township, but there were several townships comparable to us that were not on that survey that was given to them.
So that would be because they didn't report it's MTA?
Whatever the reason, I...
That would be why it's not on there.
Yeah, but, so, Unadella and Cahockta and Conwy are not really relevant to Heartland Township.
No.
When I looked at that, I thought, it's really lacking pertinent information for our size township.
Well, that's my whole point of bringing it up.
Yeah, the, the, the state law provides that, once the, um, plant, uh, once the commission, we can vote to reject it, but if we reject it, the prevailing existing wages remain in effect.
But they meet in odd years, correct?
Yes, odd year, uh, number of years.
So if we reject it, they don't meet again for two years anyways?
Yeah.
So then what's the point of rejecting it?
Right.
No, but my thought is, if you have additional concerns and there's additional data, could they reconvene in an odd year?
Uh, there is a, from their first meeting, they have to make their, uh, determination within, I think, 45 days, um, I don't know if, if they've already, they've already made a determination whether they can rescind that determination, I, I suppose that could be explored. Um, if, what I can tell you is, if you got through that, if they made a determination now, it cannot take effect this year, it can only take effect next fiscal year, so it wouldn't, it'd be delayed a year anyway.
It's probably two years.
So...
Unless somebody wants to make a motion... Unless somebody wants to make a motion to, uh, rescind it, move on to the next item.
Yeah.
Next item is two thousand fifteen marketing plan?
I'm sorry, just, I, because, I mean, the Board is in active discussion on this issue, if there is something the Board would like to plan for, or plan to do next time around, I guess now is just as good as time as any to say, if you'd like to commission certain study or survey or gather certain data that you'd like to submit to the commission next time, uh, if you have that idea now, it's just as well, or?
I, I, I think that, I think it, the commission should have as much information as it, as much information they, uh, that they can glean through. I mean, it's, it's a little bit different when it comes to elected officials versus, say, employees, where we, we go through a, you know, comprehensive review, we look at our budget, we, we, there's a, you know, there's, and percentages are applied. Um, it looked like the commission sort of looked at it almost like, you know, that the, the elected officials and the people who are appointed on, uh, on, to the various commissions, like the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, as if they're like employees, but they're not. The people who, who often give up a lot of their time, um, not just at attending a meeting, but also the work that goes in, um, goes into, um, in preparation of that, those meetings and some outside meetings, in addition to what the full-time, um, clerk and treasurer who are full-time, it's a little bit, I think that they, they're, they're missing the, the point, I think, there, but, and what it would be, it would be helpful for them, I think, to see what other clerks and treasurers and supervisors receive in terms of compensation in, in, at least in Livingston County or neighboring townships. If, if for no other reason to say, if for them to, to look at and go, "Well, you're within a, you're within a percentage point or something like that, you're, you're well within the, you know, um, the amount that, that, that's acceptable." And I think perhaps educating a little bit more about how we look at some of these things, I mean, I think when you do your analysis, you often compare us to, um, townships of similar size, SEV, um, you know, state equalized value in terms of, um, and, you know, basically where we at in, in our strategic planning, those kinds of things, where, how, I guess, you know, we're, we're not Canton Township, for example, but, but we're not, we're also not perhaps like a small rural township that, that doesn't have a lot of development going on or, and doesn't plan on having a whole lot of development going on.
So it would seem to me that a lot of this is very qualitative, very, I don't wanna say editorial information that would be of value to the commission. I don't consider that my or Sharon's place to speak into that in that way. I think probably based on what you're saying is more, most appropriate for the Board, either individually to submit and, or come to those meetings, and if you wanna let them know that, that's probably, um, uh-
Well, I think if they ask for that information, I think you should be, you should have that information readily available to them.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
I mean, you're, you provide support and information to all our commissions and Boards, and, I mean, that's what we have, why we hired you. I mean, we have you to pro, provide support to our various, you know, entities, and the commission, the Compensation Commission is, is a, is a, you know, public body, no, more than any other public body we have, making a very often difficult decision, but if they're, if they don't have the information, they don't know what, you know, what to ask and what, what they should be looking at.
And not only have the information, Joe, but know what, know some of the different processes that you go through-
Exactly.
-to, to determine, sorry, I hope they weren't put in a room and say, "Go to it," because these people volunteer their time, they're laymen to this kind of thing, they're not used to doing it at all, and they need some direction, and they would be, you would think that they would have gotten some direction as far as different procedures that they could follow, and then they would choose one, but I don't know if that took place.
And, and- I guess I can speak to that, um, I'm quite confident of that. I mean, we, we certainly put a lot of thought, particularly the first time, in, in two thousand thirteen, when they met, was the first time doing it, and, uh, I spent, uh, a meeting and a half with them, kinda talking about different methodologies for approaching the issue, I did, I gave them a lot more data, uh, at that time, um, of, of the things that we had from MTA and that kind of a thing, and it was that, based on that discussion where they kind of, you know, sorted through and, and took a lot of data off the table and focused on pretty specific things, and, um, I mean, what they did at that time was, and then you only have one different person on the commission now than you did then, um, I think from their perspective would tell you that that was their baseline, and that then whatever adjustment from there, they felt, you know, it'd already been a baseline set two years ago. I, I maybe, don't know if it's appropriate for me to speak on their behalf, but as, for as much as I know them, and I don't think any of them lack, you have business owners on there, you have former school board members on there, you have people that have, uh, some experience in these things, and they had their ideas and methodology. I think everything you're saying, and I just, some of this, I don't know that I feel comfortable that's my role to, to speak into in regards to elected officials, that next time we do this, I would maybe lean on you if you've, that's a lot, a lot of good information that's very relevant, would be, probably be best shared by you, is what I'm suggesting, and that we can, it was never a question of, um, you know, I don't think they lack new, if for some reason the MTA data had a blank for such, such township, if that was important to their deliberation, then they wouldn't have hesitated to say, "We want that number." Um, now what we can do next time is we can try to make sure that those blanks are filled in. Um, I just try not to be too presumptuous about what their methodology is. We give them as much data as we have easy access to, and not try to give them a prescribed way of arriving at their decision, and then make it very clear that if they need more information, we'll go get it. Um, so I, I think I, I understand a little bit better, and, uh, probably next time be a lot more, maybe some interaction or dial, or communication to the commission to help them consider some of these other things.
It says in their, in the, um, ordinance that they can meet fifteen times a year in the odd year, and she'll make a determination within forty-five days of the first meeting.
Yes.
Which was March?
It was twenty-fourth. And again, it may be possible that they could-
Why, why couldn't, if, if, if it was the desire of the Board for them to make sure that that's what they want for the next two years, the way I would read that is they still have the opportunity to meet more times and make a determination where they could have something come into effect in the year two thousand and sixteen. They could have something else trigger next year, that would be a different decision.
That's, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah. So not necessarily a question of rescinding the determination they made effective this year, but-
Correct, but they could, if, if there was an opportunity for them to explore something for the year for two thousand sixteen, they have to meet and make that determination this year for next year.
In order for it to be effective, yes.
Right, 'cause I look at this, you can't change what they did for this year-
Right.
-that's for this year.
Hmm.
And you're suggesting that that outreach comes from the Board itself versus?
Yeah, I think if, if that's a consent of the Board to ask them to consider, reconsider, reevaluate what that potential could be effective for next fiscal year, I'd, I'd ask maybe the supervisor, and I can, we can make those connections-
Acceptable, the Board, I could outreach to the, the commission chair and, um, have a discussion of what we talked about this evening, and I'll report back to the Board. It sounds to me like you have through this whole year for them to, to explore that.
No, we have to make a determination by May something.
Forty-five days from March twenty-fourth.
You know, here's my, this is the way I understand, they, the determination right now is they've made it, but they can meet fifteen times. If they make another decision, something that would trigger in two thousand and thirteen, or two thousand sixteen, there's nothing in here that says you can't make a determination that's-
Correct.
-a second determination that's something in the future.
Uh, we, I think we probably want an opinion on that. I don't know that that-
Well, I'll still reach out to them and-
Yeah, sure.
-before that, that-
I mean, they could still potentially do what we're talking about within forty-five days of March twenty-fourth.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is that acceptable to the, to the Board?
Okay.
Anything else on that, just, on that topic? Um, move on to item twelve B, which is the two thousand fifteen marketing plan. Is Colleen coming up to join us for that?
Good evening.
Good evening. James, do you wanna give an overview?
Yes, um, just, you do have a copy of the marketing plan that we've, uh, been working on for this year, and I, I think, um, Colleen, for the work that she does on our behalf in this regard. I wanted to put this on the agenda intentionally for a couple of reasons, just to talk about, there are some kind of new initiatives we're going into, and, uh, wanted to make sure that we, we have some time for Board discussion, questions, feedback on those things, uh, as you look over it. Um, the quick highlights of that are, uh, we're gonna start getting into more video content. You, of course, saw our Friendly by Nature video, but there will be a series of, of shorter videos that are social media-friendly around that branding message and promoting the community. Uh, there will be more of those, and, and when those are done, we're, we're gonna start getting into more video content for the website and for cable, uh, to make use of the resources we have and to tell the story. We've talked about that, and so a lot of those topics will be driven by, you know, uh, whatever the hot topic is or, or issues that are relevant at the time, and there will be, I look forward to opportunities to telling a lot of, about a lot of different issues that face us that, that we've, uh, been interested in having a way to communicate those in the past. So that's a, a bit of a new venture for us. Um, the, there is, uh, of course, we have the hartlandliving.com that's central to the branding initiative, and we will be promoting the branding more and more and, and driving, hopefully, traffic towards that website, both amongst our residents, as well as our target audience outside the community who are, who may be interested in relocating here. Um, and so, uh, you'll see a lot more activity around that and, and that, uh, the hartlandliving.com website. There's a, um, the general promotion of the branding, we, we budgeted some dollars this year to try to partner with others to, to elevate the, the visibility of the brand. Uh, we've got, uh, partial, part of that program is, we'll call them quasi-grants, but, but basically to partner with others, uh, businesses or organizations who are doing advertising to promote their, what they're doing, and that we can put the branding on as a, whether it's a, a corner of a billboard or a print ad, or, uh, the backend of a radio piece or a Comcast commercial, something where we can put the, the Hartland Friendly by Nature brand in front of a, a wider audience and start to elevate the visibility of that brand, and so those are some new things.
I gotta have a question on that.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, what, what, where did that idea come from, and I don't remember us talking about that as a Board, but, I mean, what are your, how many dollars are you planning on spending a year for, on something like that?
What was approved, you know? Uh, the, uh, well, we, we, I recognize we haven't talked much about it, I mean, certainly it was on a long list of ideas that we've been talking about over the years. Dollar amount?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Uh, two thousand towards promoting in those arenas.
So if you, if you call up to the township and you say, "Will they put that tagline on my website or my scorecard or something like that?" You get, the township's gonna write you a check.
No, they have to, they have to submit, the application is complete, there are parameters within the application, so, you know, if it's a print piece, there has to be clear space around it, it needs to be a certain size, um, in relation to the ad, and we only pay after it's run, so that I know it's run before we cut a check, and then it becomes competitive. So for example, you know, it, we may be able to do more direct mail pieces 'cause we do them ourselves through our, through our newsletters, but we can't touch television. So if somebody came to me and said, "Well, we'd like to do television," that would certainly move that to the top of the list, so it's competitive.
We'd be looking for the best opportu, not just anything that comes along, good opportunities to, to get in front of the audience with the branding. Um, and I, I mean, so what's it, could be a two hundred and fifty dollar, uh, as part of a, somebody's greater cost, depending on the opportunity and, and our proportion of the, the space that we get out of it, uh, that kind of a thing, is that?
Just, it seems very subjective. I'm just trying, trying to, I've got like twenty things right now, I could put that on there, and the township was willing to help my business by putting that as a core brand, be a no-brainer, but-
Yeah.
So I, I guess I, I'm just trying to get my head around what, what's the goal for the township, where we need to incentivize a business to, just trying to get, I'm trying to figure this out in my, in my business set for the, that, why wouldn't you put something, why wouldn't you put that logo on there?
Uh, well, certainly they're free to do that already, and, and with that, that's being promoted through the chamber, that if they like to promote the Hartland brand at the same time they're promoting their business.
That's, but that's my point, but why would, why would we feel compelled that we need to pay somebody to put that on there?
Uh, I don't know that we feel compelled, we, we, I, I see it as maybe more opportunity that, um, wouldn't otherwise be there. If it made a difference on whether, um, uh, somebody, you know, could afford to do a billboard or a, a, a radio spot or, or something, that if it made enough difference where, and, and we felt the audience was reaching wide enough or a variety, or reaching an audience through a variety of means, that it would be strategic for us to partner with somebody else doing that.
And, and I, I don't really see it as a two hundred and fifty dollar cost to help them in their printing, because there's gonna be additional setup and color work and things like that, it's helping to do phrase on the vet to get our logo put on there, to me, you know what I'm saying? They're not, they wouldn't put it on necessarily for free, it's gonna cost them something to have that artwork done and put in there.
Well, you probably have, you probably have artwork ready?
We have the artwork ready. We did have conversations with the chamber about this, asking them the best way to do this, and this was one of their recommendations, um, because especially if you're talking about radio or television, if I'm buying a thirty-second ad, I'm not sure I really wanna give you five to seven seconds of it, I, because they're very expensive, and they're very short. So we were trying to find a way to incentivize people that if you had a radio or television ad, it would make at least some sense to, to provide some of it for the branding.
And we would explore, I mean, we'd have conversations with Comcast and WHMI on, on maybe marketing that, helping them market their advertising spaces, if there's, if that makes the difference for somebody, again, as long as we get our fair share of that space.
So in this, in this Friendly by Nature tagline, are we promoting the website?
We'll point them to the website and then-
The Hartland Living?
Right.
So it'll say Hartland Friendly by Nature, and then we'll have the tagline hartlandliving.com?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I certainly recognize that's a new venture, and that's exactly why I wanted to put it on the table here, to see if there were thoughts, questions, concerns about that. Um, we'll, uh, we'll definitely tread carefully, we're, we're not gonna go with anything that just comes along, it'll have to be an obvious value for the dollar, so to speak, and, uh, as those come along, we'll certainly share them with you, um, on what those, what kind of things to anticipate those on. If you have other thoughts, questions-
Is this all broken down in our budget? I mean, kinda where things were gonna, I don't have that in front of me, obviously.
Yeah, there was a, um-
Was there, was there a dollar amount?
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was in the budget, as a-
For, for all of these elements in here, though?
Uh, oh, I don't know if each one of these, a lot of them are, I mean, the newsletters are broken out, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the survey stuff's broken out.
Business newsletter.
It's, it's in there, that's fine.
Yeah.
I can look at it.
Uh, part of that was, uh, in promoting the brand, we're working on a Twitter feed, that'd be another thing, that would be, we'd be more active, or, and then, of course, continuing to maintain what we've already been doing in social media, Facebook, with , uh, Community Life, with the newsletters, with business, uh, communication pieces. Is that the highlights?
Those are the highlights, just to follow up, in terms of video, um, for YouTube, we've loaded two videos, they've been up two months, and we've already gotten a thousand views. So we really do get a lot more bang for our buck in video than we do in almost anything else. And it's also something that's been shared, uh, fairly well. Um, one other piece, you know, we have the Hartland Voices through MindMixer, we've been testing, we've heard from a lot of residents that there's a, a barrier to entry in terms of they're not really liking the password, and, and that's how that platform is, you know, kind of allowing you to, to vote, as long as you're allowing us to have your information. We're hearing from residents, they're not crazy about that, they don't want one more password, and they worry that their information will be shared, no matter how many times you say it will not be. Um, the last survey that we did, we did measure that. The last survey that we did, we did measure that, so offered people a third-party, web-based way to cast their vote in Heartland Voices, and it was 10 to 1 against Heartland Voices. We're in that for another year, based on our contract. We do have a call with Heartland, with MindMixer to see what they can do, though there's not much they can do about the password, that's what their platform is, but we did put into this budget. We are built on WordPress for our, our website. WordPress has developed a much better survey function for the website, so come next year, we will just, we'll build it into our own website, won't in MindMixer again. So that'll be a little bit different for us as well.
Okay.
I have to ask, the branding, the water tower.
Yeah, absolutely.
It, it's been brought up, and, and I just, you know, I, not to open old can of worms, but whether there's potential interest in it or not, I, I wasn't here for that, so I get the clean ignorance on-
Think it's a great survey question.
I, I think it's a great survey question, and our new Friendly by Nature logo is so, it's more eco-looking than our old Heartland Township one, and I would really like to see it, ask other people.
We didn't put some different zip codes on it, though.
I would actually, I mean, I, I, while that makes, you know, that's something for the survey, what I see a lot, you know, if you go to, I think it's Rochester Hills or, or some of these other smaller, you know, or, or not smaller, but certain towns, they have on, just, you know, basically their directional sign, their-
We'll have a gateway and, and wayfinding signage.
I would really like to start seeing that happen, and, you know, something like that, that logo when you first come into the township, and, and I think we should, you know, find a way to get that logo on just about every window we can, and-
You're going to get tired of it fast. So we, that's in the strategic plan, 2016, gateway signage, wayfinding signage, and, and we've talked about all the ways of exploring that, when you're in Heartland, you know you're in Heartland, because you're seeing, you know, there's different element to the-
Well, in light of the, the zip code issue, let's not convert the discussion from having seven zip codes to Heartland Friendly by Nature, a place with all the zip codes. Something like that. You know, but I, I mean, at the end of the day, if there's some way we can make that connection-
This will ramp up much more, because we had some issues with our partners providing content for the Heartland Living website, that was slowing down, and there really was no point in pushing this branding really hard if there was no website to push anybody to. So you'll see that really ramping up. We have, you know, a shop locally campaign that's tied into Heartland Living, so we'll be starting to print off those stickers to encourage our businesses to put those in their windows as well.
And I'm thinking it, not just the business community, but we have a very robust nonprofit uh, community, act, active community council, obviously be part of that, but also I think the organize, other organizations, everything from the optimist club down, we really want to get them to embrace it as well, that we have all these different things, and somehow get them, you know, to, to, to consider, you know, as part of their, their own, I mean, some of them have their own websites, so it'd be nice that be on their website, or have a link to on their website.
And a lot, we've had some discussions with those folks, most people are not opposed to having it on there. They were waiting for us to have our website, all the kinks worked out, and now that we're ready to go, I think we'll see that in, in more of those organizations.
So we can ask the survey question about the water tower, just didn't want to ask if it was a, for, no matter what, no?
I don't think "no" is the right word, but I think we should get more information from our-
There's a company right in Heartland that does that, all over the world. Water towers and put logos on it and everything. It's right on Route 23.
They give us a break because they're local?
Pardon me?
They give us a break because they're local?
Maybe, you never know, if you, you don't know if you don't ask them.
Anything else? Thank you for your time this evening. And our last information discussion this evening is advocacy.
So I, just put a couple paragraphs there for you. We have a strategic plan that, you know, we wanted to, this was a sort of a new initiative, to play a more active role and advocate on behalf of our residents, particularly with county and state officials. And one of the baby steps was to maybe start inviting representatives from those organizations to come to our meeting throughout the year, just to have more inter, interaction with them. As we were sort of talking about that internally and getting ready to implement that, there was a concern that, this may be one of the highest-attended board meetings we've had in a while, actually, that, that that could be seen as a negative by those who came, even though I'm sure our viewing audience is in the, in the thousands. But that, that may not be readily obvious. And that potentially, one way, one idea that's on the table was this State of the Township type of event, and that could serve multiple purposes, including inviting all those people to one event, and have a more critical mass of people, and make that a more, a point of more interest and an opportunity to message our advocacy all at once, and our, you know, where, where we stand. That could be an audience for the business community, for residents at large, for our staff even. There's, I think, multiple things that could be served by that. We've talked about that over the years, particularly with the administrative committee. And so, wanted to put that on the board table for some thought, feedback on, as an alternative to just inviting people here and maybe diminishing relationships.
I, I like the, I like the concept, because it gives an opportunity to talk about some of low-hanging fruit things that we were working with, that I don't think the business community or the public readily understands. We've been operating under this Boyle model, for example, and having a, a 10-minute snippet of what that's, what, why that's so important and what we've done. And, you know, there are just certain things that have gone on. On the flip side of things, I don't like State of the Counties, I don't like State of the State, I think they're, they're, I, I think we, maybe that the State of the Township would, this would be a little bit better. Usually it's, it's promoting the, the executive more than it's actually talking about the State of the State. I mean, I like Governor Snyder, I didn't get anything out of his State of the State address. I mean, he's not really addressing the issues that I think need to be addressed in the State of the State, which is in poor shape when it comes to public infrastructure, but that's, that to me, these, they tend to be more political as opposed to actually talking about what's the state that people can ask about, you know, how is your budget, where, where are you at, those kinds of things. Give, give the public an opportunity to actually ask questions. So if we could call it something other than State of the Township or something like that, I would really, I think that would be a very good thing to have as a public meeting, you know, with different forms, that people can come and talk.
When we had our, the chamber function here a couple months ago, we had almost, what, around 50 people show up, 50 business people, and we all took like a five-minute, just kind of go around, it's more of like a howling round in a, this is where, then we opened up some questions, took more than a half hour maybe, 25 minutes to a half hour. But it, it was more of an opportunity to network before and afterwards, that was, that was fruitful.
I think that's a good thing. I, I also thought the meeting we had with the school board, I, I've been on this board when, when were we on, our third term?
Ten years, Joe.
Huh?
You've been on 10 years.
Ten years, okay. I guess, uh, my, my point is, I don't think we've ever met. That was the first time we ever met with the school board in-
As a board.
As a board.
You guys have a great meeting with them?
I agree, I, I, I really liked the idea.
Because we actually used to have joint board meetings, and I'm only on like 14 years, so we had two in those years where we actually met with the board.
Well, we didn't do it like a joint meeting, it was a meet and greet.
Well, years ago, Joe, you, you won't know this because you were in the limited township, but years ago, they used to have a special meeting on Saturday, and it was their annual meeting, and that's when they approved their budget and everything, and it was well-received. There was a lot of people that came to that meeting. And that's, that was a special meeting just for the budget for the whole year, and it would be kind of a, where the township is going, and where it's met, what they've done, and that kind of thing. So it was almost like what you want to do. I, I really liked the idea of doing that, and I think the more players we get involved with coming to that, to hearing firsthand what is going on, what we've done, I think that when you need support on different issues, you'll be able to get that support, because they'll be more educated on what's going on. I, I just, I'm a little bit concerned about what time of the year to do it, though. I mean, you put a date out there, I don't know if that'd be the right date or not, but I really do like the idea of having this special meeting annually to bring people in our community, whether they be in business or individuals that are concerned, up to date on what we've done and where we're going and what's, what we can expect. I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that.
So good, that, that's good feedback on whether it be the format, because I, I've certainly been to those ones that are quite dry and-
Even the one that, that YouTube that you sent over?
Yeah.
And that, you listen to that guy for 15 minutes, and you're like-
Well, then I fast forward to some different people.
I think it really has to, it's got to be a fast mover, and it can't get-
Our, our speaker's a little bit more dynamic than he was. I, I fell asleep watching it.
There was more than one speaker, so I know you guys didn't get all-
No, I thought he was the whole thing.
No, there was more.
The guy that introduced him was pretty good, but then, whatever.
Uh, so we can work on format, uh, time of year, uh, this was suggested that maybe if we targeted for a September, October timeframe, other ideas on a different time of year better?
Problem with September is that you have everybody busy with school starting.
It's probably starting.
Usually, usually September is a kind of a bad month to do anything extra.
You're not planning on doing this on a Saturday, are you?
Question for the board. I mean, the, at least in the-
It would be actually Sunday afternoon, uh, after the NFL game.
Content aside, or, or in townships, was just on a weekday in the morning, and they had 200 people there. So, they're about, eh, about twice our size, population-wise, but-
Township, you still do something at the chamber, lunching, does township still-
Yeah, it's a skate at the chamber, yeah.
Each main.
Is it better than other chambers?
They're all about the same to me.
I think it used to be a little bit more, because there was just more happening, now that there's not a lot. I, I think the more activity that's happening, the more people will show up. Average is probably 50 to 60. But, well, and the schools are there as well, so that's usually pretty well-attended.
Sure, you would, you would send out special invitations.
Sure.
You know, you'd have a general invitation to everybody in the community, but, you know, your service organization, you'd want a special invitation to those, you know, chambers, you know, different groups that are, that are heavily involved with our township, the schools, and whatever. And, uh, I think you'd get a pretty good turnout. Maybe we have it at a regular meeting, but we move the meeting, the time or date up in the day, and on a Tuesday evening, over at the high school or something. Lots of things we could do if we-
Is there a consensus to the board to, to explore that, for something even yet this year?
Yeah, I, I guess the key is what time of year, is there, if there's a concern-
I would say October.
I was just thinking October.
October.
I mean, I kind of like Joe's idea, too, maybe, because we're going to the once a month in the summer, maybe making our second board meeting in October, and we just meet earlier over there, or whatever time you feel we get the most people.
That works. Anything else on advocacy this evening?
And, I mean, State of the Township, I mean, people know what that is. If anybody has any other creative ideas for naming it, um, you know, I'm open, but I just don't-
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else this evening, and any other questions or comments, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, boo.
Support.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Kalani. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries.